Alrighty, welcome to the Monday, January 25th, Meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. We'll start with the invocation followed by Pledge of Allegiance, roll call, and then citizen input. Pastor Bowles?
Okay. Alright, let us pray. Sovereign God and Father of the faithful, we acknowledge your presence here among us and we give you thanks for that. We acknowledge our dependence on you, our need for you. We desire to have wisdom, we desire that our leaders would have the wisdom to help make Bella Vista an even greater place to live for all of its residents. We pray heavenly father that we would also be a grateful people for what we have today, not always longing for something else, but grateful as we look around us for the blessings of the beauty of this place, the people of this place, and all that we enjoy as part of this community. Again, we thank you and we ask for your blessing on this meeting and all those concerned. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Jurtson, roll call please.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Flynn.
Here.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Morgan.
Here.
Alderman Wozniak.
Here.
Alderman Wilson is absent.
Thank you. Next is citizen input. We normally have a separate microphone, but we can't find all the speakers that our friends at the Legion have, so down by Alderman Wozniak, there's one microphone sticking up in the air, and if you kindly use that, you can probably pick it up, and we'll move forward. First on the list is Conrad Lumpquist.
I'm here, but I have nothing to say.
Oh, great, okay, thank you sir, we're glad you're here. Dawn Harpel?
Hi, my name is Dawn Harpel, I live at 17 Miller Drive here in Bella Vista. I'm here tonight to talk about Sunset Drive, which I have about a bajillion times in the past, but anyway, the reason I'm talking to you today is, a couple meetings ago, which I apologize for missing the last couple, you were talking about Cedar Crest and Suitsis Drive getting about 300 cars a day. If that's the case on a dirt road, then I would have to guesstimate we've got about 1,000 to 2,000 cars going down Sunset Drive every day. It is very common to see a whole lot of cars going up and down there. If you, in the wintertime, you know how you guys sand the road? You can actually go there right now and see where the sand is missing on the side of the road, that means there's not enough road for us to drive on. We are literally driving on the edge of the road, and a lot of times that edge on that side is about that far down to the ground. So it's not very safe for our cars, nor is it safe for the people who drive it. I would really like for you to consider expanding that road about two to three feet wider so that it's not quite so dangerous. It's very curvy, you get a lot of people who really don't understand that it's actually a busy road, and they drive like down the middle of it. So it's getting more and more dangerous every day that goes by, and as more people learn that they can use that road as a nice convenient way to get to that backside of Bella Vista there. So, and actually, the exit from Cedar Crest is only maybe an eighth, maybe a tenth of a mile apart from each other, so it's really still a pretty good usable road, and would be a lot less to make that better than to try and pave Cedar Crest and Suitsis Drive. I do know that those need help, though.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I live down there, I know. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, have a great night.
And you mentioned the ditches as well, on either side, down by 71?
Oh, that's right, yeah, the drainage ditch on the side has gotten built up with stone and logs and stuff, so it's shooting all the debris onto the road right there at the very beginning.
Okay. Great, thank you. Linda Lloyd?
Hi, I'm Linda Lloyd, 102 Fairway Drive, and I'm here to speak about the Marina rezoning. We've been talking about we need more commercial base in Bella Vista, and this is, the Marina location is a primo commercial location. Having a fully functioning commercial facility there would really help to put Bella Vista on the market, on the scene in northwest Arkansas, it would be a destination, and it would be a real boon for Bella Vista. I'd strongly suggest that you approve it at the C2 level, which is what the POA needs to properly market that building. Those of us who live in Bella Vista, which is Village, which is most of us here, the POA is us, and we need that building zone C2. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Tom Judson?
My name is Tom Judson, I'm the new general manager for the POA, and soon to be resident, we went under contract over the weekend.
Alright, good.
I'm here regarding the Marina, and in going through the documentation that we received, I wanted to point out four critical differences between C1 and C2. And the first difference is accessory use. The yacht club is the primary, and the Marina, where we currently rent boats, is the accessory. So we would need a C2 designation in order to continue to do that. Regarding the second item, is bars, lounges, and taverns. C1 is only allowed through conditional use, where C2 it isn't allowed. Third one is boat rental and storage. We are, we currently do rentals, and at some point, we may move this operation under one roof, which would potentially save in labor and so forth, and give us a little bit more flexibility, and we would have to have a C2 designation in order to do that. And the last one is the recreational facilities outdoor, whether through the Marina or the yacht club, we intend to do this. And so, what we're trying to demonstrate is that there is a clear difference between C1 and C2. And whether we operate, whether Bella Vista operates this, or we third-party it out, we can't invest funds into this building if there's any uncertainty as to what we can operate and so forth. We do need to have some flexibility, but we do want to make sure that everybody is aware, we want to be good neighbors, and act in the best interest of the Property Owners Association, and to have that building, you know, vacant for so many years, and we sure don't want it to become derelict or anything to that nature, that would become a huge eyesore. So, we want to be good neighbors, but we want to do something with that and make it a destination as was said before. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a few minutes, is there anyone else who would like to address council? Alright, thank you, we'll move along. We'll get into some of the housekeeping things that have to be done. The first is the approval of two sets of minutes, the first is December 21st. Are there any errors or omissions?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Show of hands, all in favor? Opposed, same? Thank you. January the 8th?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Again, show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next piece of business you only see once a year, and it is in January, and it's a time when we have to elect a mayor pro temp, so that if anything happens to me at all, there's someone else who can step in. This past year, it was Alderman Flynn, and I'll now open the floor for nominations, I should add that anybody can nominate other people, or even yourself.
Mayor, I can quickly go over the procedure, if that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Very often. Present to Section 2, 113 of our code subsection B, "The city council shall, at the time of organizing in public session, elect one of its members as mayor pro temp. Any alderman may nominate himself or any other member of the city council for mayor pro temp, and no second of a nomination is required. Each alderman shall vote by naming his choice by voice vote, if there is more than one nominee for a position. A majority vote of the city council shall be required for election. In the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro temp shall preside at the city council."
Thank you. So the floor is open for nominations?
I nominate John Flynn.
Are there any others? And I declare the nominations are closed. Counselor, I would just assume that there's no vote required?
Go ahead and call the roll and have everybody vote for the one nominee.
Okay. So, we'll call the roll, and instead of saying yes or no, it's John Flynn. Alrighty.
Okay. Alderman Wozniak.
John Flynn.
Alderman Morgan.
John Flynn.
Alderman King.
Mr. Flynn.
Alderman Flynn.
John Flynn.
Alderman Anderson.
John Flynn.
Self-serving.
I guess we should have asked you, John, but thanks. Every year, the mayor has to report to council, and by extension to the citizens, a state of the city. And I have prepared one, there were copies at the back. If there are no copies left, I have an available soft copy, or I can mail a copy to you.
I have an extra copy.
Thank you. So it's dated today, the 25th of January, the overall financial picture for the city remains positive. Revenue for the general fund increased 1.9 million, or 15.4 percent, over 2014 totals, with 2015 actuals exceeding the budget by 1.8 million, or 14 percent. The majority of the increase was driven by sales tax, property tax, which includes the increased meal rate, approved by voters in September 2014 for fire and police pensions and ambulance service. Unlike the previous year, franchise fees remained relatively flat for 2014 at 1.8 million. There continues to be a marked year-over-year increase in ambulance revenue. In 2015, the revenue increased by $373,478, or 19 percent, which reflects 806 more calls, or 20 percent than the year before in 2014. In 2014, EMS calls increased by 487 calls compared to 2013, or 17 percent. A review of the demographics reveals that the majority of our patients are over 70 years of age, however, there has been a gradual increase of younger patients, which reflects the changing demographics of the city. This increase is due in part to the Affordable Care Act providing more people access to medical insurance coverage for EMS, as well as the transfers out of the new Mercy freestanding ER facility. Year-over-year, the expenses in the general fund have shown an increase of 6 percent. This comparison includes two large capital expenditures in both years, $2.3 million in 2014 for the purchase of land and a building from the Bella Vista Property Owners Association, and two parcels of land this past year along Highway 279 for a new streets building and fire station number four, and $2.2 million in 2015 as we began construction on these two buildings. The city's reserve was $6.5 million on January the 1st, 2015, on December 31st, 2015, it was $7 million. At one point during the year, the reserves actually reached 8.3 million. However, the construction of fire station number four and the streets building have reduced these reserves. The 2016 plan is to continue to pay cash for fire station number four, and one half of the new streets building through our reserves and revenue. The remaining half of the streets building and $800,000 for costs of other equipment will be financed through a $2.4 million loan, and the use of this financing and the additional one mil increase approved by council in October will allow us to allocate more money towards street repairs in 2016. On March 29th, 2015, a major fire destroyed our streets building on Pinion Drive, and the insurance adjusters declared 14 vehicles a total loss. Fortunately, our insurance cover through the Arkansas Municipal League covered most of the vehicle loss at replacement value, however, it did not cover the full cost of equipment under $1,000. One bright note is that our street superintendent purchased five vehicles back for considerably less than the cost of new vehicles, and was able to refurbish them and place them back into service. As a result, we now have three additional trucks and two additional mowers in our fleet. And the spring council approved a contract with Greenberg Pharaoh to inspect and provide a rating for all 550 miles of roads within the 45 square miles of the city. The result was 292 miles, or 53 percent in good condition. Excluding the 71 miles of unimproved roads within the city, the balance of 186 miles were found in various conditions, fair, critical, and lost. A street committee began the task of addressing the situation by developing a long-range pavement management plan. In 2015, we resurfaced 28.3 miles of the city streets. In addition, we improved 60 miles of city street drainage. We partnered with Benton County to widen and pave Commonwealth Drive. This project required an additional appropriation of $100,000 for material, and the county covered the cost of labor and equipment. This improvement links up with other 2015 county paving and resurfacing projects, namely Looney and Jack Crabtree Roads, improving the access to Bella Vista on the east side. Another bright note within the streets operation was the receipt of a long-awaited FIDMA payment of $249,026 for 2011 and 2013 flooding damage. There remains an outstanding balance of $48,973 of those funds. In 2015, the building and planning division changed its name to the Community Development Services Department. In December, they moved from town center west to new offices located at 616 West Lancashire Drive. The department issued 1,395 building and planning permits representing a 21 percent increase over the previous year. This is a continued upward trend that has been evident since 2011. Construction activity in the city continues at a brisk pace, with 68 new home permits with a valuation of $18.6 million. This represents a 33 percent increase for new housing starts over 2014. After meeting with builders in the spring, the department embarked on a program to cross-train all employees working with the builders to increase the depth of knowledge of city ordinances. In addition, since that meeting, the department has decreased the average time for residential housing permits from six days in 2014 to two days in 2015, and the eventual goal is a one-day turnaround. Four new commercial permits were issued in 2015 compared to two in 2014, TH Rogers, the Village Bible Church, the city streets department, and fire station number four. The department facilitated the adoption of two key long-term policy documents in 2015, the Northwest Arkansas Regional Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and Bella Vista's Community Action Plan were adopted by city council in January. The department also participated in the partnership negotiations with the Bella Vista POA and Cooper Communities and the Walton Family Foundation to lay the legal groundwork for the 150 miles of trails planned for Bella Vista over the next 10-plus years, including an extension of the Razorback Regional Greenway Trail. All legal agreements were completed and adopted by all partners, including city council in the fall. Code enforcement increased in 2015 with the hiring of a new code enforcement officer. In addition, the code enforcement officers were trained by police and our legal department to issue citations rather than call upon a police officer to do so. There have been many other projects completed in 2015 and work in progress through 2016, including the annexation of the Wonderland Cave in Bella Vista, rezoning applications, stormwater management compliance, trailheads and crosswalks for the proposed biking and hiking trails, as well as engineering, the Mercy Bridge widening project, and the reconfiguration of the portion of Reardon Road from US 71 to the former Iberia Bank Building. Aside from the increase in EMS activities and beginning construction on fire station number four, our fire department took delivery of a new 2016 KME custom pumper for the east side fire station. The department worked with Cooper Elementary, challenging the students to propose names for the truck, and the winning name was Fire Destroyer. The students were invited to fire station number one to celebrate the arrival of the new truck, and have their picture taken sitting in the cab, and then have lunch with the firefighters. Another KME custom pumper is on order for 2016 delivery to fire station number four, and we plan to work with the Gravit School District to suggest names for this truck. Other ongoing projects include the hiring of three firefighters in 2016. To complete our hiring of firefighters for fire station number four, continued certification of our dive team and allocation of an ambulance to them that is being retired in 2016. In 2015, the fire department launched the community paramedic program with Mercy Health of Northwest Arkansas, which has been well-received by the community. The police department continued its quiet and relentless efforts to keep Bella Vista one of the safest cities in which to live. Three new officers were hired, along with a reorganization to broaden the responsibilities of the department. In 2015, a new community uniform was introduced consisting of a blue polo shirt with embroidered badges and names along with khaki-colored trousers. This softer look uniform, which was worn for heydays in the craft fair, has received enthusiastic support from our residents. This is all part of the police department's outreach program that includes the Salt Academy for our senior residents, the annual night out, Public Safety Day, and Shop with a Cop. In 2015, the groundwork for a citizens' police academy was completed, with the first class being offered in the first quarter of 2016. In 2015, both the fire and the police department, along with our finance department and the state audit team, reviewed and updated our disaster recovery plan and our business continuity plan. The bottom line is that in 2015, Bella Vista was cited as the third safest city in Arkansas, according to Safewise Security, and the fifth safest city in the United States, according to Neighborhood Scout. Within the administration group, we hired a communications manager in July, who became full-time in 2016, with the mandate to complete the change of the city logo and the construction and launch of the new city webpage, and to establish and continually update our social media accounts. This change has received positive comments by the community. In fact, when our proposed trail map was posted on Facebook, we received 34,000 hits within two days. The incumbent is also responsible for all press releases, promotion of the city through articles, photo spreads, and community events, and representing the city at various events within Bella Vista and northwest Arkansas. She also participates in all planning meetings related to community events such as trails and the new farmers market to be introduced in the spring of 2016. In 2015, feature articles about Bella Vista were included in USA Today, Celebrate Magazine, and To Enjoy Magazine, along with other photographic and informational publications. In 2015, our legal department made 31 court appearances in Benton District Court and 10 appearances in Benton County Circuit Court, related to approximately 1,365 criminal traffic and city code enforcement cases. In addition, our attorney consults with the police department and the administration on a daily basis. In 2015, we hired a part-time legal assistant to help with the caseload. In 2016, we are increasing the hours for our legal assistant, and I suspect we may need to move to a full-time legal assistant in 2017. 2015 has been a busy year for our HR department, currently only two people. They have worked through 61 employee changes, introduced a new employee handbook, and worked with our insurance broker to reduce the impact of a 17 percent increase in health costs. Through changes in health coverage, including a new health savings account and changes in our dental provider, the department was able to reduce the increase in coverage to only 12 percent. HR also oversees our random drug screening program, payroll, constant review of employee job descriptions, and working with individual employees to resolve insurance and other HR queries. The greatest challenge facing our HR team in 2015 has been the introduction of the mandated reporting by the Affordable Care Act. Since this reporting is new throughout the nation, there's little expertise available. Our team work closely with American Fidelity and works time to ensure the accuracy of the reporting to both the federal government and our employees. They have worked long and hard, and they have been successful. In 2016, we will be hiring an HR assistant, whose primary task will be the reporting and tracking of ACA on a monthly basis. Our library has also been busy. They have had extensive IT upgrades for both hardware and software, copier replacement, a new heat pump, extensive use of social media as part of their outreach program to younger families, and much more. New shelves will be added in 2016, along with the hiring of a children's librarian, extended evening hours, and the introduction of a new homebound service for our patrons who find it difficult to travel to the library. In the mayor's annual report of 2015, a number of events and initiatives were outlined. This next section of the report discusses the outcome. 2015 was Bella Vista's centennial year. The Bella Vista POA hosted a number of events, including an afternoon and evening party prior to and during the city-sponsored July 3rd fireworks display. We have streamlined our permitting process within the Community Development Services Department as discussed earlier in this report. Our biking and hiking master plans have been completed and approved. All legal agreements are in place, and the first 39 miles of soft trails will be built on the east side with the completion by November 2016. The local stream team unfortunately had to abandon their project of a float experience from the dams at Bella Vista to the Missouri border. Our streets and fire station projects are well underway with estimated completion dates of April for streets and May for fire. We continue to work with Bentonville School District to find locations for much-needed elementary and middle schools. Our disaster recovery and the business continuity plans are updated, and the final area law enforcement mutual aid agreement has been executed between Bella Vista and Gravit. Our pavement management plan is operational as discussed earlier. New signs have been erected at the south and north entrances to the city. This was a joint city and Bella Vista POA project. Our library continues to seek funding for their expansion project. Our revisions of the city webpage and logo and incorporation of the use of social media tools are complete. So what's on the top of mind for 2016? Stay on target with our vision to be the premier destination for families to visit and live within our great city. Continue to develop a sense of community and our sense of place through safety, selection, service, and the element of surprise. Two exciting examples of our planning towards these goals are the farmers market planned for Sundays at the Mercy Bella Vista Emergency Facility from April to November, and the formation of a Bella Vista Arts Council. We need to keep a concentrated focus on the hiking and biking trails and economic growth through partnerships with the Bella Vista POA and Cooper Communities, as well as hiring an economic development person by March of 2016. We need to stay focused on reducing the number of streets that require urgent repair. We must be engaged with our community through public speaking opportunities and community events. Finally, we must continue upgrading our IT infrastructure to safeguard our systems and data, as well as give our employees the tools that they need to be successful serving the needs of our constituents. In 2015, we planned and approached the crossroads boldly and with purpose. As a result, 2016 promises to be a very exciting year, with big things to come for Bella Vista's future. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the December financial report. Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jurtson?
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Carry 5-0.
Thank you. The first ordinance is amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to establish a Bella Vista Arts Council to define its membership, purpose, powers, and duties, and for other purposes. This is the second of three.
This is the second of three readings. The next is amending Section 109, 166A of the municipal code to provide for stricter access, structure setbacks, and for other purposes. This is the second reading. At our work session, the council felt that we still didn't have it right, and that it needs more work. So I would entertain a motion to table indefinitely and refer this back to the Planning Commission for study and recommendation.
Mayor, I would recommend, I move that we table this and refer it to the Planning Commission until they can get back to us.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Jurtson.
All right. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is accepting and confirming rights-of-way dedicated to the public for Memorial Drive and for other purposes. This is the second of three readings. The next ordinance is an ordinance amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as the Bella Vista Marina and Yacht Club, parcel number 16-702-84-004, located at 101 Marina Drive from R1 to C2 and for other purposes. Discussion.
I thought a couple of our speakers today made very good points on why this would be a good idea to do this.
Anyone else?
Sir?
There's no doubt that Bella Vista needs as much commercial zone property as we could possibly get. This is a good chance to get some more. I definitely support it.
Thank you.
The yacht club is a beautiful building. I've been around it a few times. I've never been inside, but the architecture is unique and the location is outstanding. I think we need to support this and get something viable and thriving in there to bring some life into the area.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I've had conflicted feelings over this, and I, just because we rezonate to C2 is no guarantee that the yacht club will keep that building, that it won't be raised and something else would be in there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sunnison, you mentioned, I'm sorry.
As with most zoning ordinances, I believe we want to move this forward a little quicker than some of the other ordinances, so I would make the motion that we suspend the rules on this particular ordinance this evening and move to third and final reading.
You read my mind. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Mr. Jurtson?
Okay. All right. Alderman Morgan.
I abstain.
Alderman Flynn.
Well, I want to clarify, we're voting on whether to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading, right? I vote yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carry.
Okay. Four zero. Four zero one. I'll now read the ordinance for the third and final time, an ordinance amending the City of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning certain lands commonly known as the Bella Vista Marina and Yacht Club, parcel number 16-702-84-004, located at 101 Marina Drive from R1 to C2 and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I abstain.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Moving on to the next ordinance, adopting a planning area map for the City of Bella Vista.
I have one question on that particular ordinance. On zoning ordinances, have we normally used the emergency clause?
Normally, no.
Okay. The next ordinance is adopting a planning area map for the City of Bella Vista and for other purposes. Again, Mr. Sunnison, I believe you'd like to move this to third and final reading as well. Okay. So if there's no comments, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
So moved.
Second.
Now, we're voting on suspending the rules.
Okay. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. I'll read it for the third and final time, adopting a planning area map for the City of Bella Vista and for other purposes.
Recommend approval as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving a revised policy and procedure manual for the Bella Vista Police Department. Chief is here this evening. If you have any questions, it's a rather massive tome. I think it's 222 pages, chief, wherever you are.
I think I do recall that the chief indicated to us that all of those changes that we're talking about went through the Central Policy Committee, or whatever we call the group that put together that straw man police procedures handbook. They all went through there, right? Yes. There are two policies that are unique to our department that did not go through those through that committee, but they have both been reviewed with the mayor and with the legal council. Which two policies are those, if I might ask? Chaplin Policy and the Take Home Vehicle Policy.
Any other questions for the chief?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving contract amendment number two with Craft and Toll and Associates, Inc., for on-call engineering, planning, review, and surveying services. Mr. Sunnison, this is the last year for this particular amendment with the contract. Okay? So next year, we'll have a brand-new one?
We would need to request qualification for that particular contract.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sunnison?
I believe Craft and Toll has serviced us very well on this particular contract, so.
They have indeed. They really have. If there are no other.
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
The next resolution is a piece of annual housekeeping as well, where we have to designate some signing officers and also members of the depository board. So, the resolution reads, Designating Authorized Dispersing Officers and Municipal Depository Board for the City of Bella Vista for the calendar year 2016. The signatories are myself, Allison Fusillo, who's our finance director, the mayor pro tem, the city clerk, Mr. Jurtson, alternate number three is Mrs. Welms, and alternate number four is Alderman Wozniak. And the municipal depository board for 2016 hasn't changed from the previous year. That's myself, Allison Fusillo, and Alderman Larry Wilson. Any discussion at all? All righty, I'd accept a resolution, or sorry, a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Thank you. Before I move on to meetings and announcements, is there any discussion on any business?
I had a question, if it's permissible, to double back. The Item D, the ordinance about the rezoning, Frank Anderson asked a question about the emergency, and I think maybe this falls under that new rule as far as when it becomes effective.
It would become effective 60 days after passage, after publication. It does fall into the general rule.
And the old general rule used to be 30 days, I guess. And if we make it an emergency, it would become effective.
It would have become effective immediately, but at this point, procedurally, we were getting into foggy ground, because we're going to have to, if you were want to reconsider, we'd have to suspend the rules, we would have to have someone on the prevailing side move to reconsider the ordinance, move to amend to add an emergency clause, revote on the ordinance, revote on the emergency clause.
I personally believe it's worth that. That's why I asked the question the first time.
I do, too. You know, in the beginning, I didn't like this moving it to 60 days, and I said, in my opinion, everything should be an emergency.
All right. So if you'll indulge me, I'll try to walk you through this to get you where you want to be, okay?
Okay. First step is.
All right. First step is we need to have a motion to suspend the rules, and, well, let me back up. I don't think, I think at this point, someone who was on the prevailing side, which I think everyone voted in favor, so that could be anyone, may move to reconsider the passage of that ordinance, of Item D.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? There would need to be a roll call vote on that.
Okay. All right. Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Well, yes, the yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Okay. Carry five zero.
All right. So now, at this time, Item D is now back active for active consideration, and so at this point, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to amend the proposed ordinance to include an emergency clause at the end thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Can you state a reason for the emergency to be put into the clause?
We don't want to wait 60 days.
That is necessary for the public peace, health, safety, and welfare.
Yes.
All right. So that's the reason? Okay, that's fine. That's the reason. So there's a motion, and then, was there, I believe there was a second, Mayor. I'm not trying to take over your job.
No, it's okay.
I'm trying to get you there, okay?
This is new territory.
So, I understand. And so, it's be a time for debate on that motion to amend to add an emergency clause.
Any debate?
Well, I, you know, I wasn't the one making the motion, but I disagree with Alderman Morgan that everything's an emergency. But in this case, you know, the building's been vacant for some time, and I don't think that's a positive situation, and I wouldn't want any delay on the part of people who are wanting to move forward and do something positive with such a critical location. So I do think this is a genuine emergency from that point of view.
I yield to Mr. Flynn.
Any other discussion?
So the vote will be to, right now, you're voting on the motion to amend the proposed ordinance to add an emergency clause.
Okay. And we have a motion by Alderman Anderson and a second by Alderman Morgan.
Right.
Okay. Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Now, it was placed on third reading, so now, at this point, you have an amended ordinance that is before you, having been read three times. So at this point, a motion to approve would be appropriate if that's what you want to do.
I have a question about that from your legal standpoint. We brought the motion back up, we amended the motion.
You amended the proposed ordinance.
The proposed ordinance. We don't have a motion to suspend the rules for that new ordinance.
No, it's the same ordinance, so it was placed on third and final reading and voted and approved. You moved to reconsider the vote that approved it, which brought it back to where it was, which was on the third reading. So you're on third reading now. You don't need to suspend the rules again.
Okay. Okay.
So now, you need to, it would be appropriate to have a motion to approve and a second and any further debate on the passage of the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance as amended.
Second.
All right. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
Now, you have to vote separately on the emergency clause adoption, so.
Move to adopt the emergency clause that's in the ordinance.
Any further debate on that, and then a roll call vote.
Any debate?
All right. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carry five zero.
All right. You did it.
Thank you. That was a good move. Is there any other discussion?
Well, just for the, for my information, so if I brought that up faster, it would have been easier?
No, I think if you would have waited any longer, it would have been a lot more difficult. Well, then, we would have had to wait two hours to do it, because we'd had to call a special session.
All right. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Tuesday, February 16th, 5:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, the 22nd of February, at 6:30, right here in Legion Hall. The Planning Commission work session will be Thursday, January 28th, at 4:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. The Planning Commission regular meeting will be February the 8th at 6:45 in the City Hall Conference Room, and the Public Safety Committee meeting will be March the 9th at 9 o'clock in the City Hall Conference Room. We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'm glad I went to Walson.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up.
I got to remember to get it right in emergency.